And Facebook Live will start in just, we're on. So, and it's six o'clock, so Mayor, if you would like to start the meeting?
Yeah, Danny, will you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Let us all bow our heads. Father God, we come from your bowed heads and heart. Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Father, to be in the land of the living today. Father, we ask that you bless our city. Father, we ask that you bless these leaders, Father. Give us wisdom and knowledge, Father, that we can do things to help our city, to enrich our city. Father, we ask that you make us strong, that we can encourage the ones that are weak. We ask that you bless the sick, the shut-in, the ones that have lost loved ones, Father. We ask that you touch them, Father, and give them courage and give them strength and get them understanding, Father, for a better day tomorrow. Father, we ask that you bless our first responders. Touch them right now. We ask you bless our city as a whole, each and every one. Father, we ask you bless this meeting tonight, Father. Thank you for all of your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, and thank God.
Amen.
Kelly, you got the flags?
I do.
Okay, y'all say the pledge. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the Republic which it stands. Under God, indivisible. I think, I suppose, roll call. Marilyn.
Here.
Danny.
I'm here.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
And that's everybody, isn't it? Okay. I think I'm gonna read a proclamation. This is for the police officers of our country and our city. Whereas an ever-American community, committed law enforcement officers walked over our neighborhoods and worked to make our nation safer, more peaceful place. We honor the men and women who serve the cause of justice and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. By taking oath to serve and protect their fellow citizens, law enforcement officers answer vital calling and accept a profound responsibility and work to uphold our laws and serve on our front lines in the fight against crime and terrorism. We honor the heroism, god of law enforcement officers, especially those who have given their lives so that others might live. To the family members of past law enforcement officers, we have lost their lives in the line of duty. We ask God's blessing to be with the families and friends they left behind. Whereas by a joint resolution approved October the first, nineteen sixty-two, as amended by the Congress, has authorized, requested the President to designate May the fifteenth of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is National Police Week. Now therefore, our Richard Boyett Mayor and City of Cleveland do hereby claim May the fifteenth of every year as Peace Officers Memorial Day. This May eleventh through fifteenth as National Police Week. And call on all Cleveland citizens to observe these events with appropriate ceremonies and activities. We love our police officers, and we love our officers all through the state, through the United States. Angela, this is where you come in with the public comment.
I have to unmute myself. I just checked our Facebook. We have nothing. I've received no phone calls or emails, so we have no public comments at this time.
Okay. I think the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Council, have y'all been able to look at the consent agenda? Or do you have any questions? Go ahead, Angela.
Actually, then, it's number three, is the reports and comments by city councilman, mayor, and city staff.
Okay, go ahead. You caught me, Angela.
That's okay. Normally, you'll ask whether or not the council members have anything that they would like to say, and then you would go to the city staff.
Okay. Councilman?
Richard, this is Carolyn. I would just like, I would just like to thank everyone, all of our citizens, for joining us tonight and being a part of our meeting. And to thank our city staff for all that they continue to do to keep our city running smoothly during this time.
Good deal. I agree with you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
This is Fred. I don't want to pull it out. I just have a question on Adam ten. You speak of waiving permit fees for a specific period of time to reconnect and disconnect. Would that same thing apply for other utilities like plumbing?
We're actually under the reports and comments right now, Mr. Carroll. We haven't made it to the consent, sorry. We're on number three on the agenda. Do you have any comments that you would like to make in regards to the reporting section?
No comment.
Staff.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I just wanna thank everybody for tuning in tonight. I just want to get up, give a shout out to Mayor Boyett. We called on him, and we asked him to come and serve. And for a lot of you that don't know Mayor Boyett, he was a past city councilman for a lot of years, and he was the mayor for quite a few years. And he served the city well, and we called on him in a time of need, where we having the pandemic going on and the crisis all over the United States. And by him being recently retired, he volunteered to serve us. And I'd just like to thank him for everything that he's doing for the city and is gonna do for the city. And I told him that he had a full plate. So, Mr. Boyett, hoping you enjoying this meal you got, because I told you you had a full plate. So, enjoy, and thank you.
Danny, see, I could be sitting in my chair right now. Not this chair.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that, Danny.
I appreciate it, brother. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the counsel. Any other comments?
Mayor, I just had one comment. This is Kelly. I just wanted to remind everybody that city offices are closed on Monday for Memorial Day. And if there is a need in the community, people can contact the police department, and they will dispatch out the necessary department for whatever the issue may be, whether it's water, sewer, anything like that. So, that dispatch is done through the police department.
You know, I talked to the representative, of course, but the city of Dayton and Liberty were there, and they, they're all, they're telling me they're gonna open their, you know, cities up. Well, it'll be Tuesday, because they're all gonna celebrate Memorial Day. Have you heard anything from the governor or Jay Knight?
No, sir. The last that we talked countywide, most of the cities were going to wait until June first to do that opening.
Okay.
After all the soft openings were done, the governor wanted to see the data from these few weeks of opening and make sure there was not another surge. But the last discussion we had as of yesterday, everyone was going to wait until around June first to do that.
Yeah, I was wrong on that, Kelly. It's Monday week. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that's what they said, Monday week. So, that's a good thing. Any more comments? I didn't understand.
Marilyn, you're breaking up again.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. I think I missed my comment. I just want to continue. If you can't hear me, just continue to pray for our city. That's all.
Continue to pray for the city.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Miss Clay.
Yes, yes, we need to, yes. Any other discussion or comments? Do we need to accept those, Angela?
No, sir. Those are simply comments by the staff.
Okay.
And then you don't have to read all of the items on the consent agenda. But Mr. Carroll did have one question on number ten.
Go ahead, Fred.
Number ten speaks of electrical, no charge or fees to reconnect and disconnect. I was asking the question, what does it apply when it comes to plumbing?
And the only fees that have been requested at this time are those that had turned off electrical services, not knowing when they were going to be back open. That one particular business that I have talked with did not disconnect water service. They only disconnected electrical service. And so, that is the only waiver that we were considering at this time, since we are going to be doing or discussing an item on the agenda later to help our local businesses.
Okay, so you're saying nobody's had their water disconnected like they have their electrical for cost savings, I suppose?
No, sir. At this time, we're not doing any disconnection of water services through this pandemic, so that everyone can still do their hand washing and hygiene and all of that. So, there have been no water disconnections through.
So, we wouldn't have a reason to waive the fee to connect it?
That's correct.
Fred, you understand that that sort of makes sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anyone else have any comments on the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we accept the items on the consent agenda, items four through eleven.
Have a motion from Jennifer and a second, Danny Lee, that we pass the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Are you getting all this?
All of the council members voted aye, so it's consent.
I didn't, I should have told them to say yes or no, but. Item twelve is on health benefits by Gallagher Benefit Services, fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, employees' benefits and consider approval for staff, Gallagher Benefit Service to pursue proposals, request for employees' health benefits for twenty and twenty-one.
Yes, sir. We've got Chuck Gallagher, Chuck Robinson, sorry, with Gallagher Benefits. He's on the line, on the meeting tonight, and he is our benefits rep, and he'll be speaking in regards to that.
Okay.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for letting me join the meeting virtually. This is a little different. I'm usually out there in person. It's good to see all your faces. This is kind of a formal process we go through in May, just because of the timing, to go out to market for the medical insurance and then other benefits that we manage, that we are the broker for, for the city of Cleveland. And so, we're requesting approval to go out to market for medical, dental, vision, basic life, AD and D, optional life insurance, and the long-term disability benefits that are offered by the city. Just a little bit of background, we've had three years in a row where we've had rate passes on the medical. It's been pretty favorable renewal for the past three years, and we are looking towards the renewal that we're gonna get from Blue Cross and trying to anticipate, we might need to anticipate an increase. And so, wanting to market all of these benefits, so that when they come back July sixth, which will be when the RFP is due, we've got time to look at the options, evaluate what we need to do, and make a recommendation to the city council at the July city council meeting.
Who are we presently with?
Currently with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for medical. And then MetLife has the dental and vision. And Mutual of Omaha is responsible for the life, AD and D, and disability benefits. We moved to MetLife and Mutual of Omaha back in twenty eighteen, when we marketed the benefits. They were under rate guarantee last year, so we only marketed the medical last year. We were running very favorably when we came into this discussion in May last year. This year, the medical's not been running as well. We do have, you know, rate passes on the dental vision, life, AD and D, and disability for this upcoming plan year, but we want to keep those options open, just because it helps with the full package when we're looking at the benefits come July.
Well, we've been with you, though, through Gallagher Services.
Yes.
We've been.
How long have we been? I mean, I just.
Four years now, I believe.
Yes, been about four.
So, y'all are satisfied?
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir. They do, Gallagher Benefits does a tremendous job for us every year, and that's the business they're in. They can take these proposals and monitor apples to apples and not apples to oranges and bring us the best benefit plan for the city. They are very good at negotiating our rates for us.
Yeah, they do an outstanding job.
Yeah, and this item is just to go out for the request for proposals. So, any of those proposals will be brought back next month.
Okay.
Or in July, in July, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I make the motion to approve staff to pursue an RFP with Gallagher Services for our employee health benefits for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion from Jennifer and a second from Carolyn. Any other discussion? All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Assume it passed. Item thirteen is consider of.
Thank you, Chuck.
Tax properties.
All right, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes, Greg East.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. East.
All right. Let's see, that bid's thirteen and fourteen are for the same property. Thirteen's the one that's higher. We submitted both of them, because in case the bidder for thirteen changed her mind today, we would still have the bid under fourteen ready to go. But she did not contact me or change her mind. So, I'd like to ask you to consider this bid under thirteen for five thousand six hundred dollars. In addition to that, the buyer would have to also pay over twenty hundred dollars in taxes that weren't in the judgment, and we explained to them, you're gonna have to pay that. And she said that was okay. The only thing that's a little odd is the property is now valued at about nineteen thousand dollars. It's gone up a lot the last couple of years. For years and years, the appraiser had it valued at about ninety-six hundred. In beginning at seventeen, it went to ten thousand and change, then eleven. It was twelve thousand eight hundred last year, and now, this year, it's like at nineteen thousand.
Greg, I've been arguing with the appraisers all day long about their crazy appraisal, but anyhow.
So, I've always put the current value on there, but, you know, usually it's not that much higher than what we used to.
Yeah.
But, so.
But your recommendation is to accept it and get it back on the tax rolls?
Yes, sir. Are there any questions?
I assume there's no structure on this. No?
No. There is not.
And this bid will have to go to the school and the county, correct, for their.
Yes, right. Yes, it was.
Do we need to take each one of these separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Do I have a motion that we accept this five thousand dollars?
I make a motion that we accept the bid on item number thirteen.
I get that.
Okay, I have a motion from Danny Lee, a second from Jennifer. All those in favor, say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
I will say that Ms. Clay is not available at this moment. She is, her video isn't coming through.
Yes.
Item fourteen is consider a bid on trust property for four thousand three hundred, one hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents from Eva Corona Torina.
Yes, sir. This is the same property as what we just approved under number thirteen. If I could ask that with the speed table, I guess, if that's appropriate or declines, however, whichever way is.
Just decline it. I mean, in fact, Mayor, you can just remove it from the agenda, since we've already taken action on the property.
Okay. Is that, Kelly, is that fine?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
So, we're just gonna omit number fourteen?
Remove item fourteen.
Okay.
And you think you, Mr. East, you think you'll get it? This is for different property, or is this the same property?
Fourteen's for the same property as number thirteen. It's just a lower bid.
Okay, okay. Item fifteen is consider a bid on tax trust property, number one, three, one, seven, one, three, for seven thousand five hundred dollars for Eva Corona Torina.
I'm sorry, my dog was real good for the whole meeting. Freaking out. Sorry about that. It's this property that two have been courted, the bid amount seventy-five hundred dollars. They also have to pay post-judgment taxes of about three thousand. So, altogether, they're in for about two thousand dollars. Property is worth about twenty-five thousand as of this year.
I love you, dog.
I bid fifty cents for the dog.
Yeah, I got you, Fred.
The appraiser had it valued at thirteen thousand dollars for years and years, and then, just like the other one, seventeen it went to fourteen, and eighteen it went to fifteen, and seventeen now it's at twenty-five. So, the value's gone up a whole lot the last couple of years, but.
I see. They just need to hire me to go over and argue for these two. What's counsel's pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept a bid, one, three, one, zero, one, seven, one, three, for seventy-five hundred dollars from Eva Calery on Torina.
Right.
I'll second it.
Have a motion from Danny to accept it, and a second from Mr. Carroll. All those in favor, say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item sixteen is to consider a bid on tax trust property, one, three, one, zero, one, six, nine, zero, for three thousand dollars from Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. This one is a little bit different from the other ones. It's vacant, but it's because the city demolished the property that was on it. The bidder, it's been told and says he understands, he will, in addition to the amount of bid, if it's approved, he'll have to pay the amount of the demo lien to us and also some post-judgment taxes. And he said he was willing and able to do that if we approved the bid.
So, your recommendation is to do it?
Yes, sir. I'm always happy to sell something when we've got a demo lien on.
I make the motion to approve the bid for item number sixteen and the amount of three thousand dollars.
Second.
Marilyn made the motion, didn't she?
No, Jennifer did.
Jennifer, excuse me, Jennifer. Jennifer made the motion, and Carolyn seconded it?
That's Marilyn.
Okay. All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Item seventeen is consider delivery method for engineering, construction, and project management service for fire station project and approved negotiations of one or more contract related to choose chosen delivery methods. Okay.
Yes, and you have Perry Sutton?
Yes, ma'am. And Ray Holiday, so, on the phone.
Yes.
And then we also have Rob Sidebottom?
Yes, and my project manager, Todd Lewis, is here as well.
Okay.
Mayor, a little bit on this agenda item, we had discussed several months back about moving forward with the design of the new fire station, and we've talked to both of these companies about the way in which they can help us. So, I've asked them to briefly discuss it tonight, so that they can kind of bring you up to date and refresh council's memory. We won't go into any lengthy discussion, but just kind of hit the high points, so that everyone is reminded of where we're at on that before we move forward.
Okay, okay. So, we'll open it up to them, Kelly, to.
Yes, that'd be fine. Perry or Ray, if you want to start off?
Perry, if you just, yeah, if you just accept, there you go.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead, Ray, and I'll follow up with anything.
Okay. I guess as, and I apologize, I've got another board meeting at seven o'clock, so I'm sitting in the truck right now, so apologize for the echo sound. But, I guess, to kind of run over the services, I guess, we provided and presented, I guess, back in January, to kind of review kind of the standard services versus additional services that would be required to manage the project as a whole. We reviewed the design services such as, that are standard of preparing construction documents and specifications for the new fire station, managing the design schedule, managing the project scope, coordinating with the consultants, the civil, the structural, the MEP, preparing statements of probable costs through our historical database. We do a lot of fire stations. We've done a little over two hundred and sixty stations throughout Texas. Prepare client deliverables, conduct design progress meetings, prepare meeting minutes, and present to city council when needed, and then submit plans for design review and permitting. I guess for the entire budget, or additional services would manage the entire project budget, the building programming sessions, and then coordinating acquisition of furniture, fixture, and equipment.
Well, can I just ask one question? I've looked at the documents, of course, after Mr. Olson helped me go through all that, but what do y'all get out of it, to doing it, or doing it?
Well, I guess what we get out of it is, I guess, limiting the coordination, where we're not only managing the contractor and the documents and so forth, but also managing the overall process of it. So, it's one less, one less element, I guess, to the formula, so to say. We've currently just wrapped up coordinating. We do work with the Federal Postal Service, and so, we were doing this for them due to some of the postal facilities in the Houston area that were damaged by storms here late last fall. And so.
What I'm getting at is how much, what percentage do you get of the contract? I mean, you're bound to be being paid for it somewhere.
Right, so, our services on it was forty-eight thousand eight hundred additional to do that. So, we have the standard design services to design the project and to oversee it during construction, and that's just part of the standard services that are provided by architects. For us, we do many of the services already, and so, it's just additional kind of site visits are majority of it, where we would be there daily, most likely in the mornings, to coordinate with the superintendent, answer questions, any coordination with utilities, and then reporting back to city advisors either daily or every other day, depending on what, you know, the preferred way of communication is. Usually, we like doing just daily reports of kind of, we were out there in the site. Contractor had these questions, and just making sure everyone's aware of what's going on in case, you know, council asks questions to the C manager or to the chief or citizen wants to know, hey, I saw the concrete truck out there. What's going on? And everyone's aware that, hey, they're pouring the driveway, or they're pouring the slab, or so forth. So, just making sure everyone's aware of that, so. just making sure everyone's aware of that, so. So that's, I guess, the cost for us is an additional forty-eight thousand eight hundred to do that, um, for the.
Well, Kelly, do we have a number on what the, the fire station's gonna cost?
Um, we have, Bobby, help me with this, but I think we have five hundred thousand budgeted for the design factor, um, up to five hundred thousand for that, and then, and when we move into the actual construction of the fire station, then we're looking at going out for debt for the, for that, uh, portion. Anything that we have budgeted right now for design that is left over, um, if there is any at the end of that part of the project, will roll over into the building of the fire station, the construction work.
That is correct. There's five hundred thousand dollars that was set aside in cash for that project to get, kind of get started on the engineering. And then, once we have a good number on the, uh, construction of the fire station, that's how much we would go out for a bond.
That just seems like lots of money, just for the engineering.
This is.
Of a building that's only mainly just a garage, uh, for fire trucks, but.
Oh, well, we, we did set aside five hundred thousand, but we're hoping to come into a lot, we know we should come in a lot lower than that. The remaining amount would go towards, uh, the construction and the, uh, equipment, uh, for, for the fire station itself. Uh, just setting aside some of that cash so we don't have to go out for so much debt.
Right.
This is Fred. I got a comment. This councilman, count, councilperson, has been challenging this cost ever since we've talked about it. I'm like you, Mayor, that there's no way we should pay that kind of money for a design for a fire station. The man just mentioned a figure of forty-eight thousand, and I presume that's for the design, construction documents, and the supervision for the completion of the job?
No, sir, I believe he said that.
That's a question.
Yes, I believe he said that that forty-eight thousand was the additional for managing the project on top of the design. Um, Ray, is that correct?
Yes, um, it, uh, the additional cost was forty-eight thousand eight hundred for the additional management of the project. Um, you know, the, the, we did some preliminary, uh, design, uh, for chief. Um, we looked at programming and the sizes and spaces, the number of truck bays, and I don't know.
Well, I just.
Were we around like fourteen thousand square feet, somewhere in there?
Yes, it was fourteen thousand one hundred and eight square feet on the preliminary program that we did with, um, Chief Anderson. That was done a couple of years ago, so we definitely want to revisit that and make sure that, that, that those spaces are still.
Well, you know, I just, I just went by the city of Dayton. They just built one. It, it's, really looks really good to me. I, I don't know what they spent on it. I can find out, but it looks like you wouldn't have to just start from scratch on a design of a fire station, in my opinion.
And we have done that before. If there is a design that, I mean, we've done, like I said, over two hundred and fifty stations, so if there's a facility in our portfolio that closely resembles what your needs are and so forth, by all means, uh, you know, we can go that route. It, um, kind of talking about the spaces in the, the site, I guess, I think we've narrowed down the site, um, but um, there, we can go that route as an option as well. Um, I'm at a bid opening tonight, and, you know, construction prices are dropping here. They've dropped considerably in the last several months. Um, and so the, we're doing a fire station over in San Antonio, and normally we get about seven bidders, and today we had, uh, nearly twenty bidders, so there seem to be a little bit more hungry. A lot of the private work has stopped, and so we're seeing a, a decrease in, in cost. So, um, things have dramatically changed since.
I understand. We're, we're not, you're not asking us to start a project right today, right? Or tonight?
No, no, no.
Just, you're just wanting us to get to the point that, that we may use your company to oversee this procedure, or?
I think the question this evening is actually to determine if we're gonna be the, um, the construction manager as well as the architect of record, so I think it's determining the delivery method, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and, and Mayor, on the, on the flip side to that, um, Gallagher Construction, who is also on the call, um, they also do a project management type function for building for municipalities. And so council in the past has talked with both of these companies, so that's why we had them back here today to answer any questions, see if council was ready to move forward with one or the other, uh, and, and start the process for contracts on either or. Um, and because it's gonna take a couple of months to get the contracts in line, get them reviewed by legal, get them approved by council. Um, this is gonna push us toward the end of this fiscal year anyway, um, and then we can roll whatever funds we need to over into next fiscal year at this point.
Okay, are, are the people with Gallagher on the, with us today?
Yes, sir. Rob Sidebottom, uh, with Gallagher, and then Todd Lewis. Um, Rob, if you want to kind of overview your processes, just so the mayor's brought up to speed, please?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry that we have to see everybody over Zoom. Uh, I look forward to, to seeing y'all again in person. So Gallagher Construction Services, we are being considered at this point as a project manager and to speak to Mr. Terrell's concerns. Uh, a project manager in this scenario would be acting as an agent of the city, and therefore working closely with administration and council at the city level to ensure you are, you are only having designed and constructed what you need, uh, and that it's being done in the most cost-effective and, and efficient way possible. So we actually act as an extension of your administration, as if you had a construction manager who was familiar with today's current trends, costs, uh, processes, that is helping oversee the design as opposed to the design and construction, as opposed to, uh, having, having the folks designing it overseeing themselves in design and construction, if that makes sense. We are an extra layer of protection between, uh, the process.
This is Fred. I'd like to make a comment. This is a discussion that we had in January, and at that time, we had an architect who had in there project manager. We had Mr. Sidebottom, who does the same thing. So my question then was, where does the architect stop with his project management, and when does Mr. Sidebottom start? At that time, we asked for them to come back with a number stating what, who is gonna do what, and not over crossing, overlapping. And so that's what tonight we need to hear. And I have a set of those drawings from the architect. I've looked through them, and I think the question was asked that night, how long is it gonna take to produce these drawings? And we were told six months. As I've looked through these drawings, probably half of those pages are repeated details that they simply run through their computer, and I realize that you have different size, um, fire stations, and we need one to fit our, and our size of the land that we're putting it on. There's a lot of things that need to go into play, and I don't have the problem of having somebody do the project management that's looking out for the city's best interest. But I want to make sure, once these drawings are permitted and we're ready to start construction, that we don't double up on what we're paying for supervision. And we ask for that to come back to us, is who's gonna do the design in that part, and then who's gonna do the project managing? And if they overcross, give us some numbers so we can pick and choose.
Right. And if, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Terrell, and, uh, Ray and Rob, chime in if I, if I say this wrong, but if, if council chooses to go with BRW as the architect to design the, the fire station, that is one portion or one part of the puzzle. Council can also choose on top of that to have BRW handle the program management or the project management for the addition, the additional funds that Mr. Holiday discussed a while ago. Gallagher Construction would also, or would be an arm of that, or another portion that would oversee the project on behalf of the city if we did not choose for BRW to do the project management.
That's correct, so.
Yes.
So you're, the, the, what, what council is considering tonight, and Todd, please jump in if, if, uh, whenever you feel you need to, but, so what I believe council is considering tonight is, uh, whether you would like the option of moving forward with, with a wonderful architect who is going to design a wonderful building and, and the oversight comes from themselves. Or whether you would like to have an intermediary, i.e. Gallagher Construction, into where we represent the city as an, as an agent of the city, overseeing the design and the construction of the project from a third-party perspective.
True.
That's correct.
So in other words, it's, it's just an extension of the, of the, of the city. We would be like their agent. I mean, I'm doing four projects right now for other, you know, uh, schools, actually. And it, it, my role is to, you know, find out what's really important to the city or to the owner, and pass that down, and kind of monitor that we, basically that, that you get your bang for your buck, right? Um, and then we, we manage that process all the way down to contracts, and then we monitor construction from, you know, I always call it cradle of the grave. Um, you know, there'll be, we'll help with the bidding process. Um, we'll, we'll help, you know, uh, making sure that it gets within budget. I guess that's a big thing always, you know, once the budget's assessed, we'll help you get, uh, you know, within that budget, whether it's putting marble on the floor or just bare concrete, right? We find out what's important to y'all, and then we help monitor and manage that process, if that makes sense.
So, uh, Mr. Olson, let me ask you this question. Um, can council consider tonight, moving forward with just the architectural design of the building? And then, when we get to the point, we get ready to construct the building, we can come back for the managed services of the oversight of the construction?
Uh, sure, if you wanted to, absolutely.
Okay. Does that make sense to everyone?
I would, I feel better doing it that way.
Okay.
How does council feel, Fred?
This architect came to us, how did we choose him over other architects? Was there something that gave us the impression that this was God for us?
Um, BRW had, they've been at several of the TML conventions that we've spoken to when we were there. And they've also, Ms. Sutton has been by the fire station, um, driving through for other projects that she had, I believe, down in the Baytown area, and made contact with Chief Anderson, and just struck up the conversation about, um, when or if we were in the market for a fire station, which at the time we had started discussing. Um, I believe that's been a couple of years ago. Perry, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes, ma'am. It actually started, I think we may have actually started discussions back in, um, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, so. Um, we specialize in building fire stations and public safety. My son's getting a little upset in the background. Um, we specialize in building fire stations and public safety facilities, and I talked to Chief Anderson at one of the conferences, and then opt in to get a feel for your community and what types of facilities you might be looking for. Um, we did, because we do have such experience, we started doing a preliminary program for him based on another similar project. Um, and we did a, a preliminary site plan, too. At the time, there were several pieces of property that the city was considering, um, some was donated by a developer, so we used one of those previous floor plans that we've done, um, to gain, to give the chief an idea if that property would work and help decide if, if it was gonna be, um, feasible to purchase for the fire department. Um, so we started this process a little while back. Uh, we have a lot of experience, and in the previous presentation, we actually went through each one of the phases and the type, and the services that we provide, uh, what are our standard services, and then what would be additional services as the construction manager. And we'd be happy to, to go through that again with the council if, if that's preferred, so that, um, everyone feels comfortable with our services. Um, but that's basically the history of our, our process with, with the city.
Mr. Olson. Mr. Olson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if, I mean, I, I really don't, I mean, to me, it looks like you go out and forbids on architecture services. I mean, I, I'm sure there are a lot of people that build fire stations, police stations.
Well, I mean, you can go out for qualifications for architects. I believe that architects at hand, this is, this is what they do, and the only thing that they really specialize in, and why it's been recommended that we utilize their company, but it doesn't preclude council from going out and asking staff to send out requests for qualifications for architects to present ideas, or, you know, at least their qualifications related to these types of projects.
Mr. Mayor, what, what we, what we come up with is architects now, they, they do not bid projects. In the school, the same thing, they're selected by.
I understand.
Usually, usually do the, uh, you just mentioned the word of the day. They submit their, not an application, but the resume of the drawings and the books, things that they do. And then, for some reason, you pick an architect, and then from that, you go to your documents, and then when you pick your contractor, that is bid.
Right.
Basically, we have to select an architect, not knowing for sure what are costs, but like you ask, what percent? Because then, who's gonna decide what the estimated cost is gonna be? Is it gonna be one million or four million? And then that percentage has a lot to do with what we pay the architect. That's just the way the system works.
We're, we're a little bit different on that. Um, I, I don't like getting a percent of the construction cost, because.
Can't hear him.
Ray, we can't understand you.
And how, so.
I don't understand.
Normally, in municipality, of how much.
Ray, could you re-say?
Yeah. Ray, can you repeat that? You were breaking up. We couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. In, in municipality work, which is all we focus on, is usually the, the, there's a lump sum where, between the, the city and the architect, we negotiate a fair, reasonable uh, price for the fees and services that are gonna be offered and delivered. And from there, that way, you know, you all know what you're paying, and my finance department knows what's coming in, so, um, as opposed to getting a percent off the, uh, construction costs, which, you know, the more expensive it is, then the more money I get, and I don't kind of like the way that works. That doesn't sound real fair, to be honest, so if, you know, we start off at a project that's three million dollars and it goes up to four million, then I don't get more money in a lump sum. But in a percentage, then I get more money on that, so, um, I mean, I've done some with a percentage, but I don't really see that in, 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 in local municipal government, but it, it's truly up to you all on how you want to do that.
Hmm, I'm gonna leave it up to council.
Yeah, and, and I failed to tell Perry, Ray, and Rob, um, that Assistant Chief Roger Brooks is sitting in for our fire chief tonight in his absence. Sorry, I didn't mention that in the beginning. Um, Mr. Brooks, do you have anything to interject?
No, I don't know. I'm just, just listening.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So I guess the option here is, um, and with what I'm hearing, and with Mayor, what you said, is, um, we could either move forward with, um, the engineering at this time, um, or the engineering with the project management attached to it, or we can go out for RFQs if that's what council chooses to do.
I think at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is, is, you know, the city, we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the taxpayers, you know, we're trying to get this, uh, the, the best bang for our buck, you know, so to speak. And, uh, I understand what Fred and, and Richard are coming from. You know, we're just trying to do what's feasible, best and feasible for the, for the taxpayers here at Cleveland.
Right.
So whatever way that, uh, we can, uh, get to that point, I mean, let's just try to, try to do it, uh, do it the right way, and what's the cost effective? What's cost effective for, for Cleveland.
Chief. There's, what'd you say? Who, who's there with the fire department?
Uh, Assistant Chief Roger Brooks.
Roger, Mr. Brooks. You saying that?
He needs to unmute his, there you go. Okay.
Roger, this is Richard Boyett. Have you looked at the fire station, say like the one in Dayton, you know, they just, just built it? I mean, it's brand, well, I'd say it's brand new. I don't know how old it is, but it's, it's new. Are, are there different stations around? I mean, are there any of those stations that look like they would do what we need to have done? I mean, just in your personal opinion?
Well, I'm sure, yes, I'm sure they'll be able to accommodate what we need to, to do for the city. I'm, I'm sure about that. I mean, it just, it's just a matter of what, what, what we're looking for and the criteria and specifications of making this.
But I mean, most of those, uh, I'd say Dayton is probably pretty comparable to Cleveland, would you say? Or, or even to the new station that they built down at Porter, you know, with back behind Home Depot. And, you know, I just wonder, uh.
Would, yeah, mayor, we. Information on some of the projects that we've completed in the past and some that you could tour? We've done quite a few in the Houston area and northern, northern Houston area, so.
And, and mayor, mayor, in our early, in our early discussions, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. In our early discussions of this, we have told them from the beginning, we do not want a Taj Mahal. That we want something that is functionable, functional for our fire department, but also has room for growth as, as we grow with this city. Um, because this fire station, you know, will, will have to service for twenty-five, thirty-plus years at least. And so those discussions were had early on. There are certain specifications that have to be in the fire stations, ADA compliance. Certain things have to meet those codes, so. But we've not settled on, on every specific to go into that building yet. And that's what we would be doing through this design process. So.
After our last meeting, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Fred.
After our last meeting, I stopped by the fire station to talk with some of the guys. And they shed a little light on me on things that we need, things that we don't. So my recommendation is that we involve the fire people, the people who are actually doing the firefighting, their wishes, their demands, what they need and what we don't need. And, and I'd like to be able to sit down with the architect. I have nothing against this architect. They could probably just as fine as the next. I just want to make sure that we get a choice in who we pick and help design it. And, and like you just said, we don't want the Taj Mahal. We want something that will work for Cleveland for a long time to come. And, um, as far as tonight, picking an architect, I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure we don't overlap with what we stand our man's bar.
If we just move forward with the design function and the engineering, then we would just be doing that at this time and not be moving forward with any project management. We would do that at a later date when construction is going out for bid.
So I was going to say that that's my preference at this point in time to just go out and deal with the architectural and engineering aspects of this, especially given the COVID issue and our budgetary constraints that may arise in the next couple of months, that I would like to at least kind of piecemeal this out a little bit in that manner. That would be my preference. So I would make it proceed with the architectural aspect of this. And, and no, make no decision on the project management.
So you're making that a motion, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
And Jennifer with, uh, B R W Architecture Firm?
That's correct. I mean, cause that's the one that's in before us tonight, right?
Correct.
Just making sure.
Okay, Jennifer, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Danny Lee. Any other discussion? All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief Brooks, for sitting in with us.
Right, yes, sir. Item eighteen is to consider awarding the lawn maintenance bid to Texas Select Lawn Care for an annual amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars with a contract start date of June the first, two thousand and twenty and authorize the city manager to execute contract.
Yes, sir. And as council, um, has been aware, we have outsourced a, a portion of our lawn maintenance for several years now. The E D C had paid the function of the lawn care at the municipal ballpark until this year. And that arrangement ended this year. And with taking on that additional funding, um, at the amount we were paying at that time, it was going to put us over the fifty thousand mark for contractual purposes. And so we went out for bid for new lawn service. And, um, we've got a good bid from Texas Select Lawn in the amount of forty-five thousand, one eighty to take care of all of these locations listed in your agenda. So we're asking that council move forward with that approval.
That's really, really good. I'll make the motion that we move forward with this.
Okay.
I second that.
Carolyn, you made the motion?
Yes, I did.
I have a question.
Fred's got a question.
Before we vote on it, I want a question. I guess it puzzles me that we, we hire employees for, work for our city. And this gentleman who the lawn service has to buy equipment, trailer, he has to provide the maintenance, he has to do the insurance, and he has to make a profit on it. How is it that we can't, our employees, we can't do it as cheap as this or cheaper?
If we hire additional employees and additional equipment, we could do the same function as this company. This company has anywhere from four to eight employees, depending on the size, location that they're trying to, to take care of. And but right now, our cemetery parks crew, we have four, maybe five persons in that department that are taking care of all of our cemeteries, all of our parks, and in doing other things as well. If we had another crew hired and, and the equipment for that crew, then we could go back to take care of all of these facilities. And they also help in the street department, um, doing things in the street department as well. Um, Rod, did I miss anything on that that you want to interject?
Ma'am, the only thing that, uh, city crews have to, we have the benefits. And I'm quite sure that the lawn care company does not provide benefits. And that adds about thirty percent to our, our overall cost.
It also comes down to man-hours. You know, we hire employees, they're going to work, uh, forty hours a week. This is a few hours, uh, to do the mowing. So when you compare man-hours, we probably can do it, uh, cheaper. But we don't have the staff, uh, in, that can focus on this. A lot of other cities have also outsourced, uh, this kind of mowing. We haven't outsourced all of our mowing, but, uh, uh, it helps to have part of your, uh, mowing outsourced.
I'm not convinced, but let's move on.
I'm sorry, you're not convinced?
I'm not convinced, but let's move on. I've had this argument many times. They got, they got to make a profit and they got to pay insurance. And we've got people employed and we do it as cheap.
One of the, Mr. Terry, one of the advantages that Chad has is that he is a local individual who works in this vicinity with, uh, about ten, twelve commercial, commercial companies or commercial accounts, about fifty residential. The other company that we did have had to pay travel time from, from Conroe. And Chad's on the line also. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a certain amount of savings when you don't have to pay your, your employees' travel time to and from the projects.
Yes, sir, you're right. Uh, all my employees live in the Cleveland and Tarkington area. And, and it's not, it's, we're local. I mean, we're, we're there anytime you need us.
Well, I want to talk about like Fred says, to me though, if you had employees, you've got them three hundred and sixty-five days a year or, you know, so many weeks a year to where you're not going to be mowing grass, you know, three sixty or. It just sort of bothers me that it's that, you know, expensive to, uh, when you could get a couple of guys and, and buy a darn good mower and, and they would work all the time or do whatever we wanted them to mow. I mean, it might not be necessarily those particular places that we'd have them mowing. I just.
Mayor, back when we did all the mowing of all of these facilities, we had about four more employees in the Cemetery Parks Department. And, and as we discussed, um, back in around twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, um, we lost five positions out of public works due to financial, um, restraint. People that retired or some positions that we just didn't fund. And so if we had those positions back, plus the additional equipment, we could absolutely take care of that. But we do not have the manpower at this time to do that or the additional equipment.
Well, I, I'm, I'm counsel, it's, it's all, I'm, I'm for, if that's, if that's what you think, Kelly, and that's what you think, Rod?
Yes, sir.
Or Bobby?
Yes, we did an analysis, uh, a couple of years back. And we actually looked at the man-hours that it takes to mow all of the different, uh, facilities, including the cemetery. And it came out that it's, it's cheaper to outsource, uh, the facilities and, and have our crews continue to mow, uh, the cemetery because, uh, the time that it takes to weedy the cemetery with, with the monuments.
I go to the cemetery pretty often. Sometimes I don't know if we're doing a really good job of it now, but, uh, that's beside the point. Counsel, what do we want to do?
I got one more comment and I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll move. When we did the municipal park, we paid almost this much just for the park and I had the same argument then. So here we are, we're coming back, we're doing additional mowing because of the city hall, other places. And, and Texas Select Lawn Care, the gentleman, I didn't get his name. It's a good price. I'm not against you. It's just that it seems like that, uh, we have employees, but yet we're going to be paying you to do that work. And you, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready for you to ask for a vote.
Well, I just want to say something, but I think going forward, uh, this is something that we need to look at. You know, uh, if, if, uh, you know, Fred, what you're saying and, and Richard, I also agree. You know, let's just kind of, uh, look at it and get with Bobby and going forward, would this be more feasible if we got our own people to do it and do it within-house? But as of right now, we really don't have any choice but to, but to go with this bid. So, uh, you know, right now I'm for it, but going forward, that's something we really need to look at.
I tell my wife that she's getting a hundred and fifty dollars or so out of me every time I mow, so. But hey, do we have a, have a motion?
We have a motion and a second, mayor.
Okay, all those in favor, for or against?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, you're welcome. Item nineteen is to consider pursuing requests for qualifications for administration, engineering related to the upcoming Texas Community Development Brock Grant for downtown revitalization program grant application.
Yes, sir, the same, we, there's another round of funding for the downtown revitalization program. Um, it has been released, applications are due by September of this year. And the maximum grant request is five hundred thousand. And that would require a fifteen percent match or seventy-five thousand from the city. And we, if council chooses to go forward this year, um, for the next round of funding, we would need to solicit RFQs for the administration and the engineering services. And so, um, and some of the activities that are included in that are water, sewer, um, lines, streets, drainage. But fifty percent of the project has to be allocated to sidewalks and ADA compliance. And so we had looked at the downtown project many years ago. And it's, we had three separate phases, um, that we were looking at doing. We are in the first phase of that project now. Uh, the five hundred thousand may cover the next two phases and get our downtown revitalization done. And we're asking if, if council wants to move forward with this year with the additional funding. Or we can wait till next year, but we're sitting pretty good for scoring, um, according to, um, the administration on our grant now.
We absolutely should move forward with this, Kelly. I agree with that wholeheartedly. We can't pass up a grant or applying for it at least.
Right.
So I'll make a motion that we do that.
Motion from Carolyn.
I second that.
Any discussions? Go ahead, Carolyn.
Jennifer seconded.
Okay. All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty is to consider acceptance of improvements in Grand Oak's section two, three and four and accept maintenance bond to begin the one-year maintenance period.
Yes, sir. Um, L Squared is the engineering company that is, has been over the Grand Oaks Reserve subdivision. All utilities and streets are in, in sections two, three and four. And they're asking for us to approve cer- uh, substantial completion on those sections. They have provided a maintenance bond for one year to begin that maintenance period. And so that would cover anything that may need to be, um, repaired or, or done over this next, uh, year. They would take care of that.
When does that start, Kelly? I mean, with our.
With acceptance of the improvements.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the improvements and begin, um, the one-year maintenance period for, um, Grand Oak's sections two, three and four.
Second.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Carolyn.
Correct.
All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-two, oh, excuse me. Item twenty-two is to consider budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
You skipped item twenty-one. I'm sorry. The financial report.
Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, Bobby's going to give.
I'm trying to cry. I'm trying to cry. I'm looking at some of this stuff and I can't see the paper. Okay, go ahead.
We put this on the, the, uh, the regular agenda so we wouldn't skip the financial. The, uh, most important, important thing that, uh, well, there's two actually important things that I'd like to mention. Uh, one is the sales tax. Uh, just to give you an update, last time I said that, uh, we're looking at about a nine percent loss in collections. That, uh, is now at nine point five percent. So, uh, we're pretty close to what we had projected. Also, our depository, uh, which is Prosperity Bank, has, has asked, uh, they're requesting a modification to, uh, the interest rate. Uh, that's the interest rate that they pay us, uh, for keeping our money in, in the bank. We're looking at a, a reduction of eighty-five basis points. So if they're paying one percent interest, they're now paying point one five percent interest. Uh, and that, that has to do with the, uh, the Fed rate. The Federal Reserve had lowered their target to zero. And so that's, this request is a response to what's been happening globally, nationally. As far as how much, uh, the, the interest or what the interest rate is set by, by the Federal Reserve. Um, and so they're asking for us to, uh, accept that modification. We've been very, uh, happy with the services that, uh, are being provided at the bank. And we feel that, uh, that we, uh, staff would like to continue that relationship with Prosperity Bank. And then if things improve, we would ask for that, uh, modification to return back to whatever the market rate is. If you have any other questions about the financial, I can answer those. Sales tax, collection of sales tax, it hasn't changed from what it reported last time. If we hold off on some of our, our capital improvements, we'll be able to, to handle the reduction in sales tax. But we also have reductions in court fines and fees with, with the court not being active, as well as our civic center. So we're looking at worst-case scenario, still at a little over a one million dollar loss. Best-case scenario, around six hundred thousand dollar loss for the year.
But we're still in pretty good shape, Bobby.
Yeah.
We're in excellent shape when you want to compare us to other cities.
Yeah.
Definitely. Well, Bobby, when do, when are we looking at getting the municipal court started back up? Would that be a question for Kelly?
Yes, sir. Municipal Court has rescheduled all of their hearings and trials beginning in June. So as of June one, they'll be opening back up for those services.
Just about everything will be open by June first, excuse me.
Yes.
That'll give us some relief. That'll give us some relief.
Yes, sir. And most of the, I'm sorry, most of the civic center rentals, there have been several that have canceled, but there have been several that have rescheduled for later in the year. And so some of those funds, we will be able to retain.
Kelly, this is not really considering this what we're talking about, but have y'all thought about putting plexiglass up where people are not breathing on you when they come in there to get it, get?
Yes, I actually had that conversation with some of the staff today. So we're going to be looking at that to ensure their safety in the building.
Get that done as fast as we can, especially the building inspection part there where you're going in, or even there where you're, the desk at the front there, to me.
Absolutely.
And then require.
We had some of those discussions this afternoon, so we'll move forward with that. We've also talked about putting it at the library during our renovation. So that's something we're looking at as well.
Okay. Counsel, you want to accept the financial report?
If there are no other questions or discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the monthly financial report.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Danny and a second from Jennifer. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Yes or no? Go ahead.
Yes.
That was Marilyn.
Yes, Marilyn seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Marilyn.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Item twenty-two is considered budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Is that you, Bobby?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel, every year we adopt the budget calendar. I would like to note that this year is very different from the prior years. The state legislature has changed the rules on the budget process. So it's going to be a quicker, faster-paced adoption. And those dates are set in your budget packet or in the, in the council packet. We're looking at adopting the budget August eleventh. In the past, we've adopted the budget mid, late September. So we're looking at speeding the process up by a month. And so those packets are actually have already been sent out to the departments. They're working on their budgets. And we'll go line by line and make sure that we have the proposed budget submitted by July seventeenth. In the past, we'd submitted the budget around July twenty-fifth. And that proposed budget, once it's submitted to the C Secretary's office, we track all our changes to the proposed budget until adoption. In the budget calendar, also, the second page has the, the dates, the important dates that we have to adhere to, set by the Texas State Legislature.
Any other discussion, Counsel? entertain a motion that we accept the fiscal.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal calendar as proposed in item number twenty-two.
Second.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay, have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Carolyn. All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Item twenty-three, consider commercial account water bill stimulus plan due to COVID-19 pandemic.
Mayor, counsel, this is a, the semest plan has been approved by the EDC. It's now waiting for approval by council. This is to give basically three months of minimum billing credit to the eligible businesses. We've identified those businesses and they're in the packet as well. We're looking at approximately three hundred and twenty-six businesses that would receive, would receive the stimulus. Those accounts that were excluded or inactive accounts, irrigation meters, other entities, public entities, public schools, residential, multifamily units, apartments, not, not the, not the apartment, individual units, but if the entire apartment is on, these are apartments that are commercial units and being charged as a commercial. They've been identified as excluded. What is on this list of eligible is hotels, medical offices, RV parks, nonprofits. And the list is provided as well as those meters that are ineligible, and majority of those are sprinklers.
Right.
This will come over, I'm sorry, this will come over as a transfer from EDC to the, to the water fund.
Good job on this, Bobby. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you for, I appreciate everybody's opinion on this and advice on getting this out and working together so we can help the businesses as quickly.
When will this actually start, Bobby? I mean, will you?
We would, we could do this as the next billing cycle, give the credit, just as soon as we can enter it in.
Are you going to put something in the, in the bill or something to let them know that what we're doing, Bobby? When you?
We could give us.
They'll still have their garbage. It'll still be on a fee, right?
Correct. They'll see the credit to, to their account on their bill. It'd probably be wise to send a letter as well explaining the credit that council and EDC gave them. But they will see it on their, their bill.
Okay. Carolyn, you make a motion that we accept?
I make the motion. This is Marilyn and I would make the motion that the council would approve this plan. And I think the business would really be appreciative of this. I think it's a wonderful gesture. And I would like to make the motion that we approve this plan.
I second that.
Marilyn and Carolyn?
Jennifer.
Okay, Jennifer, excuse me. Okay. Marilyn made the motion, Jennifer seconded it. All of them in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Mayor, make sure you ask for any no's.
Okay, item twenty-four is discuss and consider funding option for DR four three three two PW five two oh nine Cleveland Ballpark Hurricane Harvey Project with Texas Department of Emergency Management.
Yes, sir. And yeah, as, as council knows from Hurricane Harvey, we had several facility damages. All of our claimed projects have been paid except for the project at the sports park. FEMA has obligated that project for the city in January of this year. It's been a long, hard road to get there with Angela's good work and submitting everything that we needed to get to FEMA through the grants portal. TDM, Department of Emergency Management, considers this one of their large projects. And so they don't like to fund the project upfront. They ask that the cities incur the expenses and then submit for reimbursement. They have given us an option to send in a hardship letter of why this particular project cannot be funded by the city upfront. The amount that they have estimated for this project is nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's a substantial hit for the city to take on to do all of the mitigation, electrical stuff, the needed things to kind of raise things out of the water out there, so to speak, moving forward. We have done some, I call them Band-Aid repairs out there to get the park back up and running so that the little league can play out there, or should we have some league play? But what we're asking tonight, the copy of the draft hardship letter is in your packet, and we're asking for approval of that hardship letter. If this is the avenue that council wants us to take in, in the funding, we're hoping that they will say they'll give us a portion of the money upfront for us to begin the repairs or fund it for us to do all of the repairs and just see what they come back with. But this is our starting point at this particular time, you know, facing the nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for the repairs that the FEMA representative, they call them investigators, have come out and noted that needs to be done out there for mitigation purposes.
Kelly, isn't there a percentage of that that they will do, that there's a certain percentage that they will not do the hundred percent, ninety?
Ten percent would be left as to what we would need to pay for that, for that would be the ninety-one thousand dollars. So, you know, the city could probably bite the ninety-one thousand dollars more than they can nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. But that would have to be something we allocate in our budget to move forward. So we'd like to know that they're on the hook for the remainder of that, the ninety percent of that.
Kelly, have we done anything to keep this from happening again?
And the way. No, sir. The way that the bio, the creeks and all the streams run over in that area, the park property that was donated is in the flood plain, and all you can build in that is parks, and we knew that when the park was built. They're doing county-wide drainage studies to see if they can do some cleaning or some mitigation on the drainage channels. But once the water gets to a certain point and starts backing up, there's really nothing we can do at that point.
I understand. I mean, you know, I personally think we need to go through that bio again. You know, we hadn't done it in probably twenty years. But that still wouldn't stop this from happening.
No, sir. And Corps of Engineers would have to get highly involved in that, especially after the events we've had. They're, they're really on top of that. For us just to go in there and remove debris and things like that, we have to have their approval before we can touch any of that at this point.
Well, the fact that we're elevating the electrical is that, that's one precaution that we afford that in the future.
Yes, sir. And, yes, sir. And once you have three events that damage the same type properties, then FEMA will not pay for damages going forward after that. It's kind of like three strikes and you're out. So at this point, we either mitigate or we just continue throwing money into repairs as we get these damages, these rain events. We can't stop them. There's nothing we can do. So we either mitigate it and try to make it better, or we're just going to keep throwing bad money into, you know, into those facilities time and time again.
A motion for that, Kelly, or what?
Yes, ma'am, if, if your acceptance of that draft letter so that we can present that to FEMA.
And we're pretty sure, Kelly, we'll get the ninety percent of it?
There's no guarantee at this point. This will help us to know where we can go with that funding. And then, of course, if they're not going to fund it, then we'll come back and let council know to see where we go from here.
Carolyn, you making a motion?
Yes, I am. I make a motion that we approve the draft letter.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Carolyn and a second from Fred. All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-five, discuss and consider memorial options dedicated to former Mayor Otis Cohen. I talked to Kelly or I talked to Fred and all, and Danny, that I felt like we ought to do something for Mr. Cohen. I know that, my personal thinking, I know that, you know, Mary, of course, works at the library, and I know Otis was a big history fan. I was just thinking maybe we could do the street there in front of the library. I don't know. I mean, that's up to the discussion with the council. What, how do y'all feel about?
Well, Richard, I, it's kind of hard not to get emotional about this, man, but I think that we definitely should do something to honor the late Mayor Otis Cohen because about two days before he passed away, Fred, Terrill, and I went to visit him. And this man was talking about economic development in Cleveland and what he wanted to see the city of Cleveland do going forward. And he, we knew, and he knew that would be the last time that we would see him, but those were his last words to us. And it just blew me away that in that position in his life, he was thinking about the city and doing something. And I think we should, we should do something. I mean, it's, it's, whatever you guys want to do, I support it one hundred percent because that's something that he deserves. That's something he earned, you know, by being a sitting mayor, that he, a lot of people probably would have resigned. But Otis came to so many meetings hurting and pain, just finished chemotherapy, and he never missed a beat, you know?
I even thought about the, the project that we just finished or working on, you know, the downtown there. I thought about maybe naming that after him. I'm up for suggestions from any, anybody or?
Yeah. Mayor, I was, I was thinking about this after we talked, and I came up with three items. It's solely just to throw out there as a recommendation, but I thought a memorial plaque at the downtown area around the sidewalk project because he was all about beautifying downtown. And that was one thing that I came up with. The other is have a memorial plaque at the library in honor of him, maybe placed out in front of the library there. Or name the splash pad after him as the Cohen Memorial Park or Cohen Memorial Splash Pad. He was so involved with, inactive with the use of our community. And the splash pad, and maybe the perfect place to do that. And so those were just three items that I kind of came up with off the top of my head. I'll throw them out there. If there's, if none of that works and council has something else, that's great.
I think that's a great idea, but I think we probably ought to go ahead and do that, the revitalization, go ahead and maybe put a plaque there for him. But, you know, that would be something we could do with, you know, right now, splash pad may be a little right now, splash pad may be a little ways down the road.
Might I suggest asking his spouse, Mary, if she would prefer or what she thinks Otis would prefer as far as, you know, something at the library or the downtown, of what she thinks that would be the best way to honor him?
Absolutely.
That's a good idea, good idea, yeah.
I think Mary is on the meeting or she was.
I'm here.
Okay.
He was so much part of Cleveland that I know that he supported the library, but I just think a plaque downtown would be pretty significant and would make a huge impact because that is also where his office was.
Right. That's what I I thought, Mary, that that he would like that.
Yes, and I also like the idea of a splash pad being named after him. Sorry about that, Jennifer.
Okay, hey, well, we can do both of them.
I'm still gonna go, how fun is this splash pad? One day.
Because he really thought there needed to be things, the the children of the city that, you know, he he tried so many different things, both at the library and within the city to have things done for the the youth, not just the adults. And I know know this, but there is a monument outside of the library now. And I believe, I haven't looked at it in a while, but I believe it has Otis's name on there because he was part of the junior something when he was in high school.
Right. Okay, I think we ought to explore all these and you come back with us and tell us what we, you know, I I don't think, see any of it costing a bunch, but I think we would move on with it, try to do the plaque or something at the at the downtown area.
And I'm really honored that you said.
That would be great.
Very honored and touched. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And I think maybe a landscape area there in the middle of the mall area with a nice plaque or some kind of memorial and monument type thing would work really well in the downtown area. So, we'll we'll explore that.
And I'll throw out something else to help you out. His favorite book character came before there was the Man of Steel. It was the Man of Bronze, and that was Doc Savage. So, I I will just simply say that if there is a bronze thing that is out there, I don't know, it has to be bronze. But it was just kind of a funny that he he, to him, the Man of Bronze came before the Man of Steel, and that's how they claim Superman.
Well, Mary, we'll probably let you work on what we put on this plaque so you can, we can integrate that into order we do, okay?
All right, appreciate it.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question. What was involved in naming, renaming a street?
And in order to rename a street, most of the time or in every instance, number one, we ask that everybody on that street is in favor of that and that we get a hundred percent participation because it, as they move forward, they have to change their address, their nine-one-one address and all of their documentation. And it can be costly to change, you know, driver's license and getting your mail redone, all of that kind of stuff. Could, there is a cost that ends up being associated for whomever lives on that street. And so, we've, several years ago, council put in a policy in place that someone would have to petition to all or have a petition signed of everybody that lives on whatever street it is that's wanting to be renamed and that we have a hundred percent participation in their signatures to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. What was that involved?
Miss Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Miss Kelly, you have a brand new subdivision with a whole bunch of streets that are newly named and there's no houses on them. Maybe we could pick one over there and we'd accomplish renaming a street after the mayor and not have to upset any other residents.
I was just thinking about that. I was thinking that, that that might be, I mean, I think we could do a little of both, all of these things.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Or maybe even in in the Glen Park area, a block that is not developed yet and he owned a lot of property over there, a lot of those lots belong to him. So, maybe that would be an option in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, the discussion? I think we've got a good starting point. Item twenty-six is consider a professional service agreement for code inspection services.
Yes, sir. And as you know, our inspector position is vacant at this time at the city. We are using some contract inspectors to help us with our inspections at this point. And we do not have a formal agreement with them. And so, I have put together this professional services agreement for these inspection services. It has been reviewed by legal. And so, I ask that you approve this just so that we have an agreement with them moving forward. And at that time, that an exhibit of attachment of their fees would be attached to this for any inspector that we we have on contract.
But we are looking for an inspector, Kelly, in the meantime, this is just to fill in between now and when we could hire someone?
Absolutely. And we last, but between last week and yesterday, we've gotten three or four good applications. And so, I will be reviewing those and seeing if we can set up some interviews for that position. But as our two large subdivisions come along, and we're probably going to need some help. One person cannot do all the inspections if these two subdivisions kick off with these hundred or eleven hundred homes. And so, we will need some additional help moving forward as well.
Okay. Council?
I make a motion that we approve, give our approval to this professional agreement. Now, Carolyn.
Carolyn.
Second that.
Jennifer, we have a motion from Carolyn and a second from Jennifer. Any other discussion? All those in favor, yes or no?
Yes.
Item twenty-seven, consider options for the annual fireworks event due to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Yes, sir. And as council knows, the city and the Unity Committee host our annual fireworks presentation every year. And we solicit sponsorships from our local businesses or any business affiliates to help with the cost. And then we promote them and their sponsorships. And with the pandemic this year, and at staff level discussions, we just don't feel like it is conducive for us to ask the businesses that have been hit so hard through this pandemic to sponsor this event. And we do have about thirty-four hundred dollars in the Unity account this year. And we have received information that we're awarded a fifteen hundred dollar community grant from Entergy for our fireworks presentation. So, the remainder of the cost is about ten thousand dollars. So, what I'm asking council to consider is whether or not we take the additional funds and out of the civic center salary line item from our prior director, some savings that was there to fund the ten thousand or see if council wants to move forward with, because of the social distancing and everything we're doing now, whether or not we need to cancel the event for this year.
That's a tough one.
I definitely agree that we should not ask our businesses. If if we have, I think we indeed should pay for it. There's no no question there. I don't know as far as the timing, if that'll all work out or not, because you know, it's a huge crowd. So, I don't know what to say about that part.
But going forward, you know, do we really know? Can we commit to having an event right now? Because going forward, you know, everything might be cleared out. And again, it could be a relapse. In a position, I really, it's kind of hard to predict that, to commit one way or the other.
That's correct. And there are many cities that are already beginning to cancel their fireworks presentations this year. And the fireworks presenter has emailed me asking whether or not we're going to move forward. He has to make plans on what he's doing as well. And so, he's just needing an answer from us as well. And if we enter into a contract with him and then we have to cancel, we still have to pay fifty percent of the cost. So, I can't see our, sometimes he'll work with us a little less than fifty percent. We've only had to cancel once because of weather. And and he did come down a bit on that for us. But he has money that he's put out for the material getting ready for the event. And so, he has to cover some of his costs. And so, at this time, and, you know, if if we don't move forward now or make a decision now with us coming up on June already, if we wait until our June council meeting to decide, it will probably be too late to get that presenter to to move forward with an event for us. We host the event out at the municipal park. And if we have to do social distancing, we'd have to limit how many people can come in out there and park every other parking spot, much as the religious services have been doing. Have somebody out there monitoring to ensure people stay in their cars. And, you know, if we're still under the regulations that we we are right now with the social distancing. So, it's hard to project. I wish I had a crystal ball.
Well, the thing about it, too, is that that park is just not the place to have that fireworks display. I mean, I know the school can't do it anymore, but it, that, you know, you limit how many people can even see it now when you do it out at that park. And it's dangerous on that road.
Right. We have had it out. One time we had it out at the airport. And the only problem out there we get into again is parking because if it's if it's been raining and the grassy area is wet, you can't park people. And and then you have Highway seven eighty-seven right there in that curve that is pretty dangerous for traffic trying to get everybody out of there as well.
This is a tough one. I I sort of think we probably already just not have it. But then, you know, that we may want to be doing something like that in July. I just, I don't know.
Kelly, do they have a deadline?
Yeah. Normally, we sign a contract with them by April, the end of April. So, we're, I've pushed it this far with them to try to see where we're at with the pandemic. They totally understand that. And I just think if we push it until the middle of June even, we're not going to be able to get the contract with them. They may already be booked for other events by that time.
That's a hot call.
I'm sure we're not the only one having this discussion, though, Kelly. I mean, I'm sure.
Yeah. And like I said, there's other cities that have begun to cancel their fireworks programs and just because of the unknown at this point in time.
Yeah.
What else could we do? What else could we do in the, at the city part that would, we could spend some money that would, besides fireworks necessarily? I mean,
And I don't know at this light of day, you know, sometimes we could, you know, try to bring in food trucks, maybe host carnival rides, those type things. But still, you have to book that kind of stuff in advance.
Well, and and I don't know whether we're going to be ready.
Exactly.
Well, it's kind of regretful for me to say, but I kind of feel like this year that we just might have to cancel this like a lot of other important events, annual events, have gotten canceled and it's out of our control because we're facing the unknown. And when you're facing unknown, how can you, how can you plan? We love to have fireworks. We have grandkids, kids, enjoy, but we're facing unknown.
I'll do them in my driveway, Danny. Will you come and keep Darrell from getting?
Don't don't tell Chief Bruce, sorry.
That's what I planned, to keep them away. I feel the same way. Council, what, what, how do you feel, Fred? I mean, you?
I feel with all the obstacles and complications that we cancel. Whether we even have it or not.
Yeah.
So, I I have a different opinion of that. I think that our community and the youth here have missed out on so many things this year. We got, you know, the governor has opened up businesses and they are asking for us to participate in social distancing and their churches are having church services and all of those things. And I feel like we should give people the option of whether they want to, you know, you know, go and attend an event like this. So, you know, I'm for still having the fireworks. I think that we need to try to carry on and do some of the things that we've done, our traditions and things of that nature. I mean, it can be done in a safe manner. Maybe we put it at the airport. You know, I I just feel that with everything that's going on, this can, this can actually be an event that is done in a safe manner. Carnival rides and things like that, that is not something that can be. But this is, you know, you can sit and see the fireworks. You don't have to interact with people. We can do it in a, I guess, in a modified manner. But I think that it's something that we should really consider keeping as something we do this year.
Well, Jennifer, I agree with you. Everything that you're saying is is great. I agree with you one hundred percent. But on the other hand, we facing unknown. I mean, what if we, what if we plan this? Or can, is it, can we even plan it now? What if we plan it at the airport during bad weather? I mean,
But but that's, I mean, the weather issue is always a risk. I mean, that's always a risk that the city faces and it and it's been rescheduled a couple of times because of that. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't know. It it's not something that involves people being next to and close to one another in order to enjoy this. And that's kind of one of the reasons why I think that it can be done.
You know, that's why out that, out at the baseball park, it's sort of hard. I used to could see it nearly about from my house, you know, when they did it to stadium. Now, you you have to either get on that road, you know, which I'm not against that, Jennifer. I feel, I feel the same way you do, Jennifer, but I just, I just, I just don't know.
And and it may be that we need to speak with the superintendent of schools to see if we can have it, if there's a location for them to launch the fireworks at the stadium and use the stadium in a in a appropriate manner. I know that they're going to have graduation there at or about the same time. And so, I mean, if they're going to do that, you know, and people can sit in the parking lot across the street at Tractor Supply, I just think that there's a way for us to do that while with people being safe. Yeah, I haven't sat in the stadium and I don't even know.
I haven't either. I've always parked out and looked.
Jennifer, the only problem with that is the proximity of the area in which they shoot the fireworks. They have to have a certain footage around the firing area. And with all the construction and portable buildings that have been brought in there, they don't have that footage anymore at the school. That's why we had to move it in the first place. And so, that that hinders us from having the fireworks there.
Wow.
I don't know if there would be another area. And I hate to even say this, but another school stadium that we might could use within the area. It still would not be within the city limits, though.
I mean, even if we had it at Tarkington, it may be, I mean, I just feel like our community needs something like that. And, you know, it's a way for us to enjoy, you know, the celebration of our, you know, and our community. And so, I think that maybe we could even approve it based on a contingent of finding an appropriate location to do it safely. I I mean, I don't know. I just think that it's important.
And actually, last year at that, at that location, it was actually pretty nice. It was, it wasn't as bad getting out and in as you think it was. It was, it was pretty nice there. But because of the, you know, because of the COVID, you know, I don't know about that, though. I I just don't think it'd be good. I just don't think it'd be good. But the location itself wasn't that bad. It was really nice out there.
Right. And and like we said with the unknown with COVID, you know, should should things start surging again and everything is shut down and those type gatherings are shut down? Then, you know, I don't know, funding wise, how they would work with us on that.
Well, I personally think that by then, everything will be, I hope, all right. I pray that it'll be all right. It's a shame we can't, we can't do it and, you know, and decide in June.
Well, if we Well, if we wanna proceed ahead and and be cautiously optimistic, and uh we might have to pull the plug on it at any time. But if it's something that we wanna proceed and 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 hope for the best, you know, but in the back of our mind knowing that we might have to pull the plug on it.
Fred, what are you?
Kelly, Kelly, what'd you say the amount that we have to pay the people to put on the fireworks?
It's fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. And if we have to cancel because we can't attend it, what do they give us back?
Usually, um, we pay fifty percent um at time of signing the contract. And then the remainder at at the presentation that night. And so in the past, when um we had to cancel because of rain, they did give us back half of that fifty percent um because I haggled them about it. Um, because of the torrential rains, there was no way to have it and a lot of the other uh areas that they present for had also had to cancel. So they did work with us and gave us back. We ended up paying twenty-five percent of the cost just because of their materials.
You're looking at a thirty-seven hundred dollar gamble. At the cheapest, and if they don't, you're looking at seventy-five hundred gambles.
That's correct.
Yeah, and he might tell you that at the beginning.
But that's always the gamble. Like, we gamble with that every year based on the weather. So it's not like this, oh, my gosh, we're gambling with that. It's a it's a yearly gamble that we make.
He may.
We do pick a rain date. We do pick a rain date as well. So if it rains on the fourth, we usually have it the next night.
But as you said, a lot of cities have canceled. He may be in a position that he may give you a better deal.
That's true, too.
I mean, because
It's a gamble all the way around.
Yeah, well.
Well, we, well, do we have to make a, a, make a decision and put it in concrete tonight? Can we just tentatively look at something?
Um, I can check with him and see. He was needing to know something by the end of this week. And I can see if I can push it another week and explore some options of locations if y'all want me to. Um, but still, you know, and at this point, they need to know so that they can plan and start building their presentations and what they need to do for for the different areas that they present.
I think we should cancel. I think we should cancel, and I think we should probably think of something else to do. Um, I think we should think of something else to do. I mean, I I really think we should do something, as Jennifer said, but I think we should cancel the firework just to be on the safe side and just think of something else to do to sort of get the people together, but think of something else to do.
Well, and and Miss Miss Clay, I can appreciate where you're going with that, but if we're having to still do social distancing, it's hard to do something to gather people together. Um, at at least in, at the fireworks, if they drive in and we tell them they have to stay in their cars, then at least they're still contained with their family. Um, that would be the only thing I would interject on trying to find something else for them to do because if if we're still under the regulations or or the COVID is still rampant and we need to do social distancing, that's kind of hard for gatherings.
And Kelly, let me ask you this. This may not relevant, but uh I see that the uh ball clubs are gonna open up in June. Will they have any kind of tournament or any kind of play on July the fourth out there at the park?
And they normally don't because they know we have our Fourth of July um presentation out there. So they normally schedule around that.
Okay.
Yeah, and they are supposed to Carol and Stark on the fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm real happy about that. That'll be good.
Yeah, me too. I don't know about going out there all the time.
I know. That's kind of hot.
And you got, you got
I feel like we need to give us folks the choice of whether they attend or not. Whether we have the fireworks, people can choose to attend. They can choose to not attend. They can do so safely. I just feel like if we take away that option, um, I I I don't know.
It's gonna be a hard call.
Doesn't mean I'm gonna be there.
Yeah.
Hey, Kelly, Mayor, um, you know, there's been some discussion about a contract with these folks, and it's Meyer saying, Kelly, that we haven't actually had that discussion with them yet about what their, this year's contract would look like. Um, we might, is that correct?
They do have a a contract already. Um, there has been no signing of a contract with them. That could be something, you know, I can discuss with them on the funding um issue to see.
Well, I do, I think there's an opportunity here to address the, any kind of change in the governor's order or any other order that would uh prevent us from being able to have the event, that we lessen the percentage that we would have to pay uh to just actual materials. So I think there's an opportunity there to have that discussion with them. If it's outside of either one of our control and we're not allowed to have the function for some particular reason, um, at least eliminates that risk and mitigates our exposure.
Okay. So do we wanna approve our our contingent on um some kind of funding plan or I guess that would be council's decision.
Maybe contingent on, I mean, it's a hard call. It's just, it's a hard call.
It is.
Well, let's just, let's just try our best that we can that we can have it. But if the situation presents itself and it plays out to where we can't have it, let's just be sure that we've done everything that we could possibly do to have it. And if we face something, if something comes up and we can't have it, we just have to cancel.
That's a contingent.
Something that's out of our control.
Right.
We were controlling it. We would have it. It had been scheduled. We'd had the fireworks and everything. But this is out of our control, you know. Just don't know.
You gonna make that as a motion, Danny?
Yes, sir.
I second that.
We have a motion from Danny Lee to to continue with the fireworks with, maybe Doc, Mr., uh, David, you might even look at the contract and help see what you can.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't want to interject too much, uh, you know, legal into this because that that might just turn them the the opposite direction. But I think it's, Kelly, I think it's worth having a conversation that, hey, look, we recognize that if we unilaterally cancel that, you know, we're obligated to pay fifty percent and we decide as a city that it's just not worth the risk, but doesn't necessarily um uh contradict and a standing order, because right now we could have this event. So unless something changes, we could have this event tomorrow. But I I do think it's worth putting in a clause. I think they might be receptive to the idea that if something changes at the state, federal, or county level that precludes us from conducting this event that's outside of our control, that that we limit the cost the city has to incur to the actual uh cost that they incur. And we, they seem like they've been reasonable in the past about stuff like that, and I don't see why they wouldn't move it forward.
Right. Okay, well, I have a motion from Danny, a second from Jennifer. All those in favor, yes or no?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Terrell, did you vote no?
Yes, I did. Vote no.
Did anybody else vote no?
So, so let me understand this right. So, so uh, Mr. Olsen, so if, so if it's out of our control where the state, where the governor is saying that we cannot have it, would we be, I, I, I mean, as far as the, in the contract, would we be obligated to pay this money or?
Well, we haven't had that conversation with them yet, but what I'm suggesting is that Kelly has that conversation with them and see if they're willing to lessen our exposure, financial exposure, if that, if that happens. So that if something happens like that, that, you know, yeah, we understand. We've got a relationship with you. We'll pay for your cost, whether that's three thousand or thirty-seven hundred, or, you know, like it was the one year we had to cancel. Um, but at least we're not exposing ourselves to the entire fifty percent of the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, because that's a lot of money.
But I would like to look at some other locations, but I mean, that's, we could do that. You could do that or, uh, I don't know.
I think Kelly can explore that on her own and then, uh, because we have time between now and before, if we want to change locations and it makes sense.
Grand Oaks.
I sort of thought about that, but I don't.
When we discussed that with Grand Oaks here before last, they said getting people in and out of there and parking down through the roadways and all of that, they were not receptive to that at that time, but I can have that conversation with them again.
Okay. So we're through with that?
Okay.
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 Marilyn, you happy?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I suppose we go into executive session.
Okay, Mayor, you need to, you need to read the executive session items out loud, the two that are listed.
Okay, twenty-eight is a closed executive session under Texas Local Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one for consultation with attorney.
There's another one. And the number twenty-nine.
Go ahead and read the other one, Mayor.
Okay, okay. I don't see another one.
I have twenty-nine.
What did I, I don't see twenty-nine.
Page four.
I don't have a twenty-nine either.
Well, Angela, read that, read that twenty-nine. I don't see it. Oh, mine.
No problem. Closed executive session under Texas Local Government Code five-five-one dash oh-seven-two to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property.
Okay.
Council will go into executive session. What we'll do is we're going to go into what is called a breakout room. I will move everybody over. You'll get an alert on your screen that says to accept being moved over. At that time, you just simply have to click the okay button. And then there will be a brief time where it might be dark. You'll then end up in the breakout room. This meeting will still continue, but both meetings cannot hear each other. I will have a screen that says that we've gone into executive re- um meeting so that people that are viewing this will see that screen and not just a black screen. And then when we leave the meeting, I will move everybody over. If you do get dropped for whatever reason, just dial back into the meeting and then I'll move you back over.
I see it now, and I do have it in my pocket.
All right.
Jennifer, would you, Angela, would you repeat your, what the each individual we need to do? I know you talked about it, but just simple.
Yes, sir. You'll, as soon as I assign you to the go to the breakout room, a message will pop up on your screen. I think it says something like, accept being moved to the breakout room. Accept it by hitting the okay button. It'll automatically move you over. That's the only thing you have to do is just accept what I'm fixing to do. It's automatically gonna move you. Don't do anything else. Everybody will show up in the other room.
Hit the okay button.
Yes, sir. Just bear with me so I can add everybody in.
Okay.
Will Bobby be going into the executive session or just Kelly?
Um, just myself.
Yeah, I don't, I think just Kelly's fine.
Good job, Mayor.
Fuck it. Oh, I could have been sitting in my chair, Carolyn.
I know it. Bless your heart. You'll be there soon. You'll be there soon.
Yes. I know, I've enjoyed it. Y'all are, y'all are great.
Absolutely. Okay, it says the host is.
Do we join, Angela?
Yes, sir. Yes, I want you to join the executive session.
Still here, Angela.
I just moved you over.
Okay, so you join?
Yes, I need you to accept it. With the, it'll say join. Okay, we're just waiting for Marilyn to move over. Okay.
This is, uh.
Yes, sir. You'll, as soon as I assign you to the go to the breakout room, a message will pop up on your screen. I think it says something like, "Accept being moved to the breakout room." Accept it by hitting the okay button. It'll automatically move you over. That's the only thing you have to do is just accept what I'm fixing to do. It's automatically going to move you. Don't do anything else. Everybody will show up in the other room.
Hit the okay button.
Yes, sir. Just bear with me so I can add everybody in.
Okay.
Will Bobby be going into the executive session or just Kelly?
Um, just myself.
Yeah, I don't, I think just Kelly's fine.
Okay. I just need to know.
Good job, Mayor.
Fuck it. Oh, I could have been sitting in my chair, Carolyn.
I know it. Bless your heart. You'll be there soon. You'll be there soon.
Yes. I know, I've enjoyed it. Y'all are, y'all are great.
Absolutely. Okay, it says the host is...
Do we join, Angela?
Yes, sir. Yes, I want you to join the executive session.
Still here, Angela.
I just moved you over.
Okay, so you join?
Yes, I need you to accept it. It, it'll say join. Okay, we're just waiting for Marilyn to move over. Okay. This is, uh...
She's getting better at this.
Okay, everybody should be back in the room.
Yes.
All right.
Mayor, I think we, I need you to go ahead and read the next action item.
I gotta unmute everybody again. Hang on.
Okay.
Okay.
What is this?